Commissioner Juarez has let us know he will not be able to be here this evening. So obviously, we'll verify that here in our roll call, but I did hear from him before the meeting. So I am officially calling the committee of the whole meeting to order for Monday, May 1st. And our first order of business is a roll call. Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hess.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez.
Commissioner Prado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. May I please have a motion to excuse Commissioner Juarez from the meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess, supported by...
Support.
Mr. Decker. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. All right, thank you. Manager Risma, hello. Do you have any communications?
Hi. Nothing right now, Your Honor.
Okay. Appreciate that. Now, we're jumping right into public comments. Just a reminder here, we will take public comments from anyone who's here in the chambers first for the committee of the whole meeting. Those public comment period is two minutes. You can call in as well. That number is 888-382-9556. And so you should call in now. This is the only opportunity for public comments at this meeting. There will be an opportunity for public comments at our business meeting that starts at 7:00. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a comment for this meeting? See, no one. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, has anybody called in?
We'll go ahead and check.
Thank you, DCM Chamberlain. All right, Manager Risma, we are down to the solid substantive portion of our committee of the whole meeting tonight. I know we've got some great individuals here in the room who are going to be spending some time talking to us. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask our chief, Dave Boyson, to come forward. He's going to present this evening on the Department of Public Safety and give an overview, but also focus on our community policing efforts in the department. So Chief Boyson?
Thank you, Manager Risma, and welcome, Chief Boyson. Always a pleasure to have you here.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and leadership. Thanks for having me. Appreciate the opportunity to present on public safety. Does that sound okay? It sounds like way down a little bit. Okay. All right. Very good. So yes, I was asked to initially speak on really updates regarding community policing and our community service team and some of the great work that the folks are doing. Eventually, I'm going to have Assistant Chief Green and Captain Giles come up and present on that. But before we get into that topic, I want to give a couple of brief updates for the commission of the community on some other public safety matters and some of the work going on. So kind of go over the agenda that I'd like to cover here, talking about the public safety goals and objectives, really just to update where we are with the goals and objective. I know we had a work session with the commission. We went over those, but I kind of want to give an update on that. Our community survey tool, I'm very excited about that. So we rolled that out a little over a month ago, and we have initial results from that survey tool that I want to share with the commission and the community. And then also our OIR group. So we met, had a couple of sessions with the community to close out our OIR report from the 2020 civil unrest and protests. And so want to update on that. And then I'll turn it over to Chief Green to start with the community policing and community affairs portion. Oops. Okay, so one of the things that we're really working hard is getting alignment within the organization. I've really been very happy. I've been intentional with meeting with every single officer in the organization, really to talk about our goals and objectives at public safety. And the thing that we are all really focused on is our core mission, which is providing a safe community for our residents and visitors in Kalamazoo. That is our number one goal, is to make sure that we are providing outstanding police, fire, and emergency medical first response services to our community. And so I want to make sure that we have the right training, equipment, and tools and support so that job can get done. And so anything we do at public safety, the first thing I'm going to ask my staff, if it's a new program, new idea, new strategy, the first thing I'm going to ask is, is that going to help us keep our community safe? And if the answer is yes, we're going to do it. If not, then we'll maybe have to shelve it and look at other things. But right now, that is our core mission. And really foundational to that is really, the next thing on that is building meaningful relationships. We can't do it alone. We have to have great partnerships with our community and our residents. That is really the key to this. So the underlying theme that we're doing, that we, that the staff is really working hard is really that balance between outreach and enforcement. We know that in order for us to be effective at reducing crime and keeping our community safe, we have to have a balance of outreach and enforcement. We've tried just enforcement alone. It didn't work. We've tried heavy outreach, didn't work. But when you work, when you, those two efforts are combined and they complement one another, it's really effective. And we're seeing that with reduced violent crime because of that really targeted approach where we're super focused on the outreach and enforcement. Now, kind of a perfect example of that is what we have of going on with our youth crime. It was a priority of the city commission looking to reduce youth violence in particular, and rightfully so. And so we've had a lot of success with some of those balanced approaches between outreach and enforcement. So first of all, internally at public safety, we've really aligned our, all of our divisions to work together to identify those who are most at risk of not only becoming victims, but suspects of gun violence, really what interventions can we do on the law enforcement side to prevent these events from happening? And really, it's not just internally, but really we're working hard with our other law enforcement partners in the county, because again, we can't do that alone either. So we're working hard with the county, with the prosecutor's office, with the juvenile probation, juvenile courts, and really improving that communication and sharing of information back and forth so we can really focus on a small number of youth who are most at risk. We're doing the same thing on the outreach side, too. And so we are really looking at making sure that we get our youth who are most at risk engaged in positive programming in the city of Kalamazoo. And one of the things that we're really excited about, and thanks to the commission for the support of the Police Athletically, and that's a really important strategy, but for, in order for it to be effective, we have to have the right youth participating in those events. So one of the things that we've done is we've identified youth who have multiple police contacts, and we are intentionally focusing on trying to get those youth engaged in not only PAL, but other programs in the city through Parks and Rec and other community programming. So we've been going door to door. So last week, we started going door to door. And so we've had our community collaborator, Latony Turner, community policing officers, and Johnny Berry, who is the director of, or who is part of Parks and Rec, but oversees our Police Athletically. They've been hitting door to door, talking to those families to make sure that they're aware that there's all this phenomenal program in the city of Kalamazoo that they can take advantage of. And so just last week alone, we hit over 20 households going door to door, and we've had a lot of positive feedback from that. So again, it's really that, when it gets back to that, what I talk about meaningful relationships, not just having relationships, but having meaningful ones that really will help us keep this community safe. The other focus that we have at public safety is employee wellness. And I am very encouraged that quite often I get asked from, from the commission and from other community members and stakeholders, like, how are your officers doing? We know they have a tough job. It's a stressful, stressful job. Are they doing okay? How is their mental health? And that's something that we really need to focus on and continue to improve. We have a call and service that people can call, if their officers can call, if they're having things that they want to talk about. We partnered with Backing the Badge before, but it's what we're finding is that if it's just a number to call, that officers, if there's no relationship there and they're not going to call, they're not going to take advantage of that service. What we're finding is it's really about relationships. Again, so we're looking at getting someone internal on a contract basis that gets to know our officers, can ride with our officers, and have someone they can talk to. We've seen a lot of success with that with our Chaplain Program and our Pastors on Patrol. Those folks are in-house, are riding with our officers. Our officers get to know them, and it's just another person they can talk to, to share and to kind of decompress and go over some tough things. Because again, these officers have to deal with a lot of tough situations. We ask them to do it day in and day out. So we want to make sure that they have the support they need. One of the things I'm asked is, well, how are your officers doing? And I, and I think I know, and I, you know, anecdotally, I know how they're doing, but I don't really have good data around that. So one of the things that I'm going to be talking about in a minute here is our survey tool. So not only did we start a community survey tool, but part of that is an internal survey. And we're going to hopefully roll that out next week for the first round of that so we can ask our officers. They'll be sent questions via text that's anonymous. They can put their name, or they, or they can leave it out, but we really want to know how they're doing and what can we do better to support them, what services do they need. So I will have hopefully, hopefully better data around how we really are doing. So it's really important to hear from our officers and giving them a voice to be able to, to share how they're, how they're doing and what we can do to better support them. And also what we're working on and continuing to work on is really those improved communications internally and externally. So I've met with almost every single officer on the department, got a few more to go. It turns out when you got many different shifts and days and nights and power shift and, you know, it takes a while to get in front of everybody, but we've been really intentional about that and really, really want to hear ideas from the staff, what we can do better, anything that they can bring forward to make sure that we, as the chief staff, better support them in their role. So really improving that communication internally. And then really with the community, again, it's so important that we have, again, meaningful relationships. You know, you have to have those relationships before you have a crisis. You can't wait until something bad happens and then try to talk to people. You have to have those relationships before. And so I've been very intentional about meeting with a lot of people in the community. I'm going to continue to do so. You know, we've got like a community advisory group that we've met with on several different things, and we're kind of building that out, and we're going to do that at least quarterly now to really keep that communication going, because it's really important that we don't get isolated and we keep the doors open. To that, it speaks to our last point, which is increased transparency. And I say this to people all the time, that I'm very proud of the work that the men and women at public safety do every day, and we have nothing to hide. We want to open the doors. We want the people to know what their public safety department is, what we're doing, who we are, and so the doors are open. So really increasing that communication, and we've provided tools for folks to see what we're doing. So with that, I'll kind of go forward here. And it turns out that we, there's a lot of people that probably don't know all the tools available for them as far as transparency at public safety goes. So that's why I wanted to take the opportunity here to highlight this for our community to see that, you know, we're really, again, intentional about giving people the tools they need to see, or answer, or have the questions answered that they're looking for. So one of the things that has been available for a while is our KDPS.org. If you go to KDPS.org, there's a tab that says data, and you can click on that, and you can see calls for service, crime mapping, and crime stats. And I think we are probably the only department in this area that updates those stats every 24 hours. So those, when you pull that up, that's been updated within 24 hours. So that's done automatically, so we really want to keep the community informed about what's going on, not what's going on last week, or we want to know what's going on within the last day. So Clerk Borley, I don't know if you click on crime mapping. This is an example. So when you go to the site, you can click on that. That's the city of Kalamazoo. You can kind of zoom in to your neighborhood and see what's going on the last 24 hours. And each one of those tabs is an incident. So you can click on that, and you see this one that he clicked on is a vehicle break-in. And, you know, so you kind of have an idea what's happening in your neighborhood. So that tool is available. We really want people to use that because we also look at, really, if we want to reduce crime, we have to look at data. We have to see what's going on, what interventions we're doing. Are they working? Are we seeing a crime spike in a particular area? What we can, what can we do to get ahead of that? So click out of that one. The last one is the Kalamazoo Transparency Page. That's on the Cal, city of Kalamazoo website. But if you click on city of Kalamazoo website, you can just type in transparency in the search bar, and it takes you right to our transparency page. But there's a lot of great information on that page, and I just want folks to know that's available to them. You know, you can, you can talk about our appeals board, that crime mapping and stuff that I just showed you from our page is also on this one. But if you go to KDPS documents, there's a lot of good information on there. All of our policies and procedures are on there for people to see. The OIR group report is on there. That My 90 Reports is what I'm going to go over in a minute. If you go up just a little bit, that's going to be our community survey tool, and we're going to update that monthly so people can get on there and see, you know, what folks are saying about us, how we're doing. So that's going to be on there, too. So our union contracts, there's just a lot of good information on there. So I just want folks to know that these tools are online, they're available for everyone to use and take advantage of. All right. And with that, again, talking about My 90. So My 90, we should talk about it at our work session, is, I'm really excited about this. This is a way for us to get feedback from the community about how we're doing. Again, I get asked, hey, how you're doing? Well, you know, now I have data to show really how we're doing out there. And it's a, really a three-part tool. So one is a post-traffic stop survey. So if we stop a car, whether we give you a ticket or not, we're, all the officers are giving out this card with a QR code on the back, which will take you to the survey regarding traffic stops, and it'll walk you through that. The next piece is post-contact survey. So if you call the police from your cell phone, within 24 hours, you will get a text that will take you to a survey tool to, again, it's all anonymous, and you don't have to leave your name, but you can let us know how we're doing. And these questions, whether it's traffic stops or post-contact surveys, are really all about procedural justice. Really, all these questions are really around procedural justice. It's, you know, basically, was the process fair? Did you have a voice? And was the officer transparent in their actions? So really, that's, all these questions are really about procedural justice to see how we did. So, and the third piece of that, the one you see that's locked, is employees surveyed, and it hasn't started yet. We're hopefully going to roll that out this week. So this is going to be a dashboard, again, that we're going to have on our transparency page, and we're going to update that monthly. But this kind of shows you how we're doing. And when we first did this survey, some people said, well, gosh, you know, when people call the police, they're not usually having a good day, and they're probably not really happy. Are you worried about what these results are going to be? And I really wasn't, because I know that the men and women in public safety really were cared about treating people with respect and, and being caring and compassionate to our community. So I knew that we would probably see favorable results, but again, we needed to find out for sure. So this is over a month of data here, and the first one you see is traffic stops. And that is, that 93% shows that over 93% of our comments were positive. Post-contact, over 82% were positive. And one of the key takeaways was, we scored 80% or higher in all categories regarding procedural justice, which is really important to show how we're doing. So this is the post-contact information. You can see based, so this, one thing I like about this tool is you usually get the text about 7:00 that next evening after the call. I think they figure that about 7:00 is when people are at home on their phones and have more time to maybe answer a survey so they get better response rates. So you see, again, usually when people call the police, they're not having a good day. But we had 81% were either very positively or positively view KDPS after that interaction. So I thought that was very, very encouraging. This also is really important, because this really drills down on those procedural justice type questions. The number one thing was, I was treated with respect, and you can either strongly agree, agree, or neutral, or all the way down to strongly disagree. And 90%, a little over 90% of the folks either strongly agreed or agreed with that they were treated with respect, and that's really the heart of procedural justice. So I was really, really pleased with that. I was treated fairly. Over 80% were treated fairly. They listened to me, again, you know, had a voice. Again, that's almost 90% were, were, you know, that they listened. Staff answered my questions, again, in the high 80s. So just really, really positive results from our first round of surveys. This is another thing that's good for us, too, is what, we can ask the community, what's your biggest concern in the city of Kalamazoo? And I don't think it's a surprise to this commission that their number one thing that people chose was gun violence. That is their number one concern, which shows really us that our priorities and the city commission priorities are aligned with what the public is looking for, which is improvement in the gun violence. Race, ethnicity, I thought this was interesting, because it really pretty much mirrors the demographics of the city of Kalamazoo. Age was also pretty evenly divided across all age ranges of respondents. Now, we're getting into the traffic stop portion. So this was one that, you know, think about when you're stopped by the police. Usually, it's not a, you know, positive thing. Nobody likes being stopped by the police. But we asked the officers to do certain things at a traffic stop, and this is a way that we can measure that. So number one thing we say is, the officer needs to introduce himself. I'm Officer so-and-so from the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety. We asked, did the officer introduce themselves? 87% said yes. 6% weren't sure. 6% said no. So the vast majority was very positive that they were doing what we asked them to, and I thought this was interesting. We want the officers to let them know why you were stopped. You know, I'm Officer so-and-so, the reason I stopped you was you were speeding, or you failed to stop at a sign, or whatever it might be. And 100% of the respondents said that they were told why they were stopped. The other thing is, it's interesting, too, is it's not, again, it's all comes down to procedural justice. It's not the outcome of the stop, whether you got a ticket or not, but it's, were you treated fairly and how, were you treated with respect? And so after this survey, 62% had a warning, 6% had a ticket, and I'm not sure how 31% weren't sure what happened, but 31% weren't sure. But when, those who got a ticket, though, did the officer explain how to take care of the ticket? 100% of them said yes. Officer explained what to do to take care of a ticket. This is all good stuff that we want our officers doing. And this is also, I thought, very encouraging was, you know, after your traffic stop, how do you view the Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety? 93% either very, very positively or positively. So that's really good post-traffic stop information. And this breaks down race and gender. Again, it's pretty evenly split between African-American and whites. There responded more males than females. I don't know if that relates, you know, has any indication on who's got the worst driving habits, but, and age is all over. One of the things I didn't include on this that I received was a lot of very positive comments. So at the end of these surveys, people have the opportunity to fill out free-form text. And we had a lot of people that took the time to thank officers by name for their service, you know, how they were treated, how much they were helped. And so it was great for me, because I was able to take those comments and share them with my staff. It's really good positive feedback for them to hear, help build morale that, you know, people are really appreciating the work that they do out there. So I was happy to get that, get those comments and get those out to our officers. Okay, switching gears to my last topic, the OIR update. So, excuse me. So in 2020, in response to the civil unrest and the protests, the city of Kalamazoo hired an independent firm to look at public safety and how we respond to that and ways that we can improve and do better. So since then, we've been working really hard to improve our policies, our training, our procedure, putting things in place to, to get better. And one of the things, the last thing we had to do was there was about 40 recommendations, there were 40 recommendations from the OIR group on changes that we need to implement. Of those 40, there were five of those that specifically called for public input before we could sign off on those policies. So we had some meetings with the communities, community stakeholders. We did two of those, one on March 16th, 2023, and one on March 23rd, to look at each one of those five policies that we needed community input on, to let them know what we did. And it wasn't just us in a vacuum. So post-2020, we had a subcommittee that was made up of some city commissioners, as well as public safety, to really look at our internal policies, look at national best practices, what, what other people are doing, and really kind of condense it into looking at the recommendations they made into policy changes at KDPS. So, and those two meetings, really, the, the goal of those meetings was to really look at those policies and make sure that we were aligned with what the community wanted. David Wheatley of Humener, Humenergy, Humenergy, if I said that right, acted as our facilitator to really help guide the conversation in our work group. So, and the, the work group was made up of cross-section of the community. We had neighborhood leaders there. We had downtown folks there. We had our citizens review board. We had a few commissioners there. So we really had a good cross-section of our community. And we were looking at those five things that we were asked to, to present to the community. And those, each one of those, one was crowd control strategies, crowd control techniques, establishment of police zones, dispersal orders and announcements, and the use of National Guard. So those are all the things that we focused on in those two-day meetings. And really, the goal was to make sure that we got alignment around our policies regarding First Amendment assemblies, and then getting comment and discussion with the group on, on what we were proposing to put in place, to make sure that we were aligned with that. So the first day, we kind of went over what happened in 2020, what we learned, and not only what we learned, but what we've actually put in place since then and some other incidents that have happened, really the success that we've had implementing some of these strategies. And then we got into really the nuts and bolts the second day of getting input from the community and to making sure that we were in agreement with what, what we had proposed. So at the conclusion of that second day, the community group was asked, are these policies as proposed? Are they fair and reasonable? Are they aligned with our role of keeping the community, its people and their rights safe? And each person was asked, and we were in 100% agreement that, that we were in alignment with that, and we can proceed with finalizing those policies. So that's kind of closed the door on the last piece that we had. But just because we have our policies finalized doesn't mean that we're not going to look at them again. So one of the things we're also tasked with is really, you know, to continue to look at ways we can improve, continue to evaluate, and reevaluate how we're responding to these, these type of events. So it was a very positive meeting, some really good discussion. We were glad to, to really get, get some good feedback surrounding that. So with that, my portion is done, and we want to make sure we have time for questions for you afterwards. So if that's okay right now, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Green and to get into community policing portion. Okay?
Thank you very much, Chief. Chief Green, good to see you here.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Great to be here on this, not sure if we're in the summer or winter time, but today, we're going to talk about, as Chief Boyson got into a little bit more discussion about the overview, we're going to laser a little bit more into the Office of Community Affairs. I'm honored to be here with my colleague, Captain Giles, and we're going to discuss specifically the Community Affairs Division. As you know, this division is covered with many areas. One, we cover internal affairs. The other one is our community collaborator, Latonya Turner, as all of you are very familiar with, and all the work that she's been doing in the community. The other one is Pastors on Patrol, POPS. But today, we're going to specifically talk about our community policing unit, a brand-new team now that we have, and also our community service team, who've been in existence for less than a year. As you know, that we align our mission in the Community Affairs Division similar to or parallel to Imagine Kalamazoo 22, I'm sorry, 2025, and, and such as youth development, creating a safe community, demonstrating governance, good governance. But more important, importantly, how do we create meaningful relationships? And also, our goal with everyone else in public safety is, how do we humanize this badge? How do we increase transparency? How do we increase the safety? So Captain Giles is going to go into a little bit more detail about the great work that our community policing unit is on, our community service team, and she's taken over the unit less than a year ago. She might think it's been longer than that, but I turn it over to Captain Giles to go into more detail.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
As Chief mentioned, I'm Captain Danielle Giles. I've talked to you guys a lot before, but here to talk to you a little bit, thank you guys for inviting us to talk about an update for our division. Our division does focus on the initiatives of Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, as mentioned. We do have three main divisional priorities, though, and those are collaboration. We want to make sure that we're working internally and externally with our stakeholders to both proactively and reactively problem solve. We want to provide service delivery through public education, and our goal is to create, promote, and sustain outreach opportunities with the community to, to build trust. Tonight, we are going to focus mostly on our community education component that we're doing here within our division, and we are currently gearing up for the Spring Kalamazoo Regional Citizens Academy, which actually starts this coming up Saturday. This year, participants are going to be going through a two-day program, which will include This year, participants are going to be going through a two-day program, which will include using our very new virtual reality simulator. They're going to have demonstrations by our specialty units, and they're going to go through numerous scenario-based exercises to give citizens an insider look at our local law enforcement. We'll be hosting a second Citizens Academy in the fall. So if you know anybody who's interested that couldn't get in on the spring, please have them go to our website and fill out an application. It is open to all Calamazoo County residents, age eighteen and up. And our community partners for this year are going to be the Calamazoo County Sheriff's Office, Calamazoo Township Police Department, Michigan State Police, Western Michigan University Police Department, Portage Public Safety, the Drug Enforcement Administration, Integrated Services of Calamazoo, and the U.S. Attorney's Office. So when we say a regional academy, this is a regional academy. All of your local agencies are participating. So to first talk about the community policing unit, as mentioned by Chief Green, we had several new team members start in just February of twenty twenty-three, and they've had, hit the ground running because they needed to hit the ground running, because we have events that were coming up that needed to get planned. The community policing unit focuses on non-traditional policing methods to solve problems within our community. This includes working closely with many other city departments, housing, parks and rec, C P and D. Um, we focus on juvenile gun violence. We participate in numerous community events. The unit does have eight community policing officers who are assigned to all the neighborhoods within the community. In the last couple of months, we've really been focusing on getting the new C P Os trained and get their needed certifications so that we can continue offering free education throughout our community. Our community policing unit currently offers civilian response to active shooter events and stop the bleed training in partnership with Bronson Hospital to local businesses and organizations. That's active shooter training. We go in and we tell you if you have an active shooter at your organization or your business, how you can help protect yourself and others around you. We have officers that are trained to conduct crime prevention assessments at local businesses, using the crime prevention through environmental design, the SEPTED model. We help safely install car seats as a Safe Kids Calamazoo Car Seat Inspection Site, and we provide C P R training to various community groups. In the past few months, we've also implemented a new C P O neighborhood map, and this goes back to increasing transparency and communication, both internally and externally. The map is on our website at the website found below, or at the link found below. Essentially though, anywhere you live in Calamazoo, if you click on your neighborhood, it will pull up who your neighborhood C P O is, the neighborhoods that they're assigned to, their phone number, their email address, and their photo. So if you see them in the neighborhood, please wave to them and say, I know you, I saw you on the map. Community members listening tonight, if they want any of the training that we talked about tonight, or if they have questions about their specific neighborhood, they're welcome to get on the page and email the C P O, and we'll get something scheduled for them. Moving on to the community service team, obviously, we started this team in June twenty twenty-two, which aims to connect community members to community services. The team has a primary focus on the unhoused, but also works closely with many community partners to provide services and support for veterans, the elderly, families, and at-risk populations. Second Wave Media did highlight the team earlier this year in a news story, which is featured above, and the, the link is there as well. The community service team has two assigned officers who are trained in crisis intervention, de-escalation techniques, and both of them also serve on the Calamazoo County Negotiators Team. Additionally, we have a social service coordinator who works very closely with both teams, both the community policing unit and the community service team. To give just a highlight of the first six months of them being implemented by the numbers. So in the first six months, and this is going to be from June of twenty-two until December of twenty-two, our C S T team handled over a thousand calls for service that were specific to their job responsibilities and expertise. This included in-progress crisis calls and following up with frequent callers that you, are using our nine-one-one services or different services within the city of Calamazoo. We visited thirty unique campsites that were cleared and cleaned up, and we made five hundred visits to cold camps. Since its creation, the team has been able to get temporary placement and additional services for countless unhoused individuals. And our social service coordinator was able to connect ninety-three individuals to services with numerous follow-up phone call, or numerous follow-ups made to each of, each and every one of them. The community service team also serves as our resource navigators. They work collaboratively with direct service providers to develop both holistic and sustainable long-term plans for community members. This can include housing, employment, treatment options. We host a monthly partnership meeting at our headquarters where service providers come in and we share information. We discuss trends, we talk about needs, we share success stories. A lot of our community partners are on the website, are on the link above. Um, the Y W C A, Griffin Place, W M U Street Medicine. So all the services that are being provided to our unhoused population, we get together to include local law enforcement agencies to say, how can we do this better? Is there something we need to change? Our team also had the opportunity just last week to travel down to Wichita, Kansas, to train with our homeless outreach team, whose policing model has been nationally recognized. While our two cities are, are different, especially as it leads to the amount of affordable housing available, the training largely reaffirmed the practices that we're currently using and provided several ways for us to continue outreach in our community. The community service team and social service coordinator can be reached at the contact information above. Again, being mindful, um, to make sure that if it's an emergency that we're dialing nine-one-one. But if you have something that's not an emergency, um, I have an encampment on my house. I want some information about trespassing or panhandling. Feel free to email them, and as soon as they're back to work, they will get back to you. So, again, thank you for your time tonight. I know we went through a lot of information, and if you guys have questions for any of us, you're welcome to ask. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Captain Giles. I appreciate it. Commission, questions for our K D P S team members that are here? Yes, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just want to say thank you guys for everything that you've done, um, within the community, and also putting this together and kind of showing us in the community what you guys have been working on. Um, I did have a couple of questions for, um, our chief. You had said that you guys are going out and, you know, hitting door-to-door the individuals that might be at the most high risk. When we're out there, are we getting, have you found that we're getting commitments with the parents and the kids to join these, um, these programs that we have? And also, um, do you hear of any barriers that they say that's inhibiting them from joining these, these programs?
Well, you know what? Captain Giles oversees community policing. Her team is doing that. I could answer that, but I think she could probably do an even better job, so I'm going to
Knew it.
Um, so we have been going door-to-door, and I don't think he mentioned how we're identifying kids that could be, um, using these services. So if you've had any police contact within the last thirty days, more than two contacts, that's if you are a suspect, if you're a witness, if you are involved with the police in any way, that means that you could possibly be, benefit from some of these extra programming. So we're going and we're knocking on your door, and we're talking to the parents, and we're talking to the kids, and we're saying, you know what? Um, we're here to support you. This is a program that we have coming up. We give them the flyers. Um, it's been half and half. We've had, um, some parents say, no, I'm all set. Um, thanks, but no thanks, um, which is unfortunate, but again, we're still trying, we're still out there. And for those that are interested, telling them, hey, these are the different sports that we have. Um, this year, they expanded to several different sports, which is really nice, and it's going year-round. And I think as PAL continues to grow stronger and get more programming, we're going to get more kids in. Um, I think for flag football specifically, we had over two hundred kids this year, which is amazing. Um, and that's just one program, and I think there's about ten programs this year.
And then I'll just, uh, touch on the last part of the barriers. So one of the things we are identifying is transportation. Is identify as an issue like, how do I get my kids to these programs? So we're working with Parks and Rec, really to come up with some strategies to make sure that if kids want to go to something, I really hate to see that as a barrier for them not to be able to get there because they don't have transportation. So I think that's probably one of the big things that we identify.
Thank you. Um, and then another quick question regarding the, the My Ninety tool. Um, I think that's awesome. And I think as the community gets more, you know, aware of this, you know, and again, like you said, you're getting great feedback, um, with our officers and what they're doing, um, within our community. So what about, I, this just popped into my mind, um, what about when an individual calls nine-one-one? Is there, how do we, um, how are we able to give them praise or say what they, you know what I'm saying? How are we tracking that for our community?
And, and actually, we are going through nine-one-one. So when you call dispatch, that's what generates that text. So when you call from your, your cell phone, and most people don't have landlines, uh, but if you call from your cell phone, that number to dispatch, um, is what generates that text. Uh, so actually, and I shared it with the Director of the Calamazoo County Consolidated Dispatch, because there were a lot of good comments about the dispatchers as well. So that's also an opportunity for people to provide feedback, uh, to, uh, about the, the dispatchers that took their initial call.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, that's what I was looking for, is how are we also recognizing those individuals that are, are the ones that are taking those calls? Also, within the My Ninety, uh, I was kind of looking at the post-contact. So do we have any outreach, you know, when you get one that says we disagree or strong, strongly disagree? You know, do we reach out to those individuals and kind of, you know, speak with them at all, or is that something that could be in the works later on, after this has been going for quite some time?
So that's a good question. So this is a completely anonymous survey, and we really want to keep that integrity because we want people to feel comfortable giving honest feedback without worrying that we're going to knock on their door if we don't like what they say. However, because there's that free-form text portion, uh, so I will say that we've had a lot of great comments, and I think of the, I don't know how many, you know, hundred comments that we had, we had four of them that were, you know, kind of negative. And one of those left a phone number for contact, follow-up contact. So we assign it to our, our Operations Division to call them because they're basically asking us to call them. And so that gives us an opportunity to really close the loop, because a lot of times it might be a misunderstanding or something. So if people ask in that for additional contact with us, if they're not happy with their service, we will definitely call them and follow up on that. If they don't want to give that information, that's okay too. Again, that's why it's, I think it's good to go through a third-party vendor, because it's not public safety that gets these surveys. It's another vendor, which really kind of keeps, uh, that insulated if people want to provide anonymous feedback.
Thank you for that. Thank you for reminding me of that, um, of the anonymity of that. Just one more thing on the My Ninety. So I'm pretty sure that you guys having this, this is also a way for you, um, and your team to kind of know where we, where you guys might need to train a little bit more. And I just talked about that specifically, you know, when individuals say that an officer did not introduce themselves. So, I, you know, I think it's great because you guys are also kind of being able to see, okay, maybe you need to do a little bit more training on here and make sure that they're going through these steps. That way, everyone's uniform and everyone's doing the same thing.
Yeah, and, and one of the questions are, one of the, um, survey questions was, did you get the help you needed? Another thing that we're really, um, I think you do a better job explaining that, you know, when you call the police and you ma- make a police report, you know, that, if it's a case that gets assigned to detective, you know, it's assigned to detective, and you're not going to be called like the next morning, but you'll get called within the next day or two. And I think people need to know that, just be patient. If you want to press charges, make a complaint, hopefully you got the right instructions on what you need to do, and just be patient because you will be contacted, uh, by a detective once that gets assigned.
Thank you. Thank you guys for, you know, keeping us safe here in the city of Calamazoo. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks, Commissioner Decker. Other questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say, thank you for representing, um, being a representative a- at the Spending Your Horizons event, the conference, um, Calamazoo, y'all showed up, showed out. We had the most people there. Also, thank you for having, uh, Latanya attend the G B P N work group meetings. Uh, it's been a pleasure getting to know her and her insight, so I wanted to give you all that shout-out. And then a question came in in reference to today's, um, presentation around, um, the traffic stops. So thirty-three percent were black and thirty-three percent were white, even though black folk only make up, a little under twelve percent of our population. So can you speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, and I think, um, if, one of the things that we do is we deploy officers to where we are having calls for service. Um, so, um, if you look at, especially with our main focus is really reducing gun violence and violent crime, you know, unfortunately, a lot of our officers are deployed in, um, areas whi- which are either, um, north side or south side of Calamazoo and the east side where we're having the majority of those type of incidents, and those are more disproportionately African-American. So you're going to have more contacts um, with that, with, with that demographic. Uh, so I think that's probably what it is, but again, this is only our first a little over month of data, and so, you know, that will play out over time, uh, to really see, um, how we're tracking over time. Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner, also to add on to that, one of the things that we're looking at, and was going to be very hopeful for the commission and also the community, is that when a traffic stop occurs, uh, and the officer gives you the card and for, to give us feedback. And, and it's so new that we still have community folks who are not filling out the information, so we're asking everyone to assist us by filling out the information.
Yeah, Captain Giles also reminded me of a good point is, that's just, that's not the demographics of the people we stopped. That's who responded to the survey. So, you know, that's also, we really want to get the word out to please, you know, take the time to really, and it only takes a few minutes just to click on that Q R code and, and give us that feedback.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hess.
Hey, thanks, all, for being here. Um, so I spend my life in, in sports, and it feels to me like you're the coaches, and you, you talk about your team. It's truly a team, because a team is not functional without the things that you've spoken about here tonight. Um, and, and being truly mission-focused like you are. I feel like my time on the commission that we have definitely moved the needle forward with communication, mission focus, and, uh, and, and all that. So, really, i- if you're a team, I'm your cheerleader. So, go team. Uh, to follow up on the traffic safety issue, so two, two things. I, I hear from a lot of people, why don't the police stop speeding people? You know, can, can you help me out with that? Because that, i- that's a reactive kind of thing, and I, and I focused on education myself, and I really feel like we have to educate rather than react and, and do the traffic stops, um, and, and park an officer there. Where if an officer is doing a traffic stop, fifty people speed by them. You know, so can you, can you speak a little bit to, why don't the police do this, um, and react rather than proact?
Yeah, and traffic is really a, a big, you know, another thing that we're actually focused on, and really is, is a marching order for our officers, and we're having these one-on-one meetings with them, is we really want them to focus on hazardous violations. So speeding, reckless driving, run-through stop signs, that's the kind of things that we want to see our officers stopping cars for. And so, one of the things that we really want to do is make sure that we're getting good information on where we're getting the most complaints. So you can get online and make complaints if you have someone speeding in your neighborhood, or, you know, certain streets are bad, let us know. Because one of the things at Public Safety is we, we respond to almost four hundred calls for service a day. So sometimes we don't have a lot of time for proactive policing where we can stop and focus on speeding, uh, because we're going call-to-call or responding to police fire and, and medical calls. Um, but we do have traffic enforcement. We do have one officer right now dedicated to traffic enforcement, and it's good for us to get that feedback because it's, it's a big city, a lot of streets. But where are we, where, where can we have the most impact? Where are we having the most complaints? Uh, we look at traffic crash data, where we're having the most crashes to put those, put them in that area. Uh, but again, a, a lot of it is, uh, and I don't know what's happened, but since twenty twenty, I think people are less and less patient, and people just drive more aggressive now, is what we're seeing also. And, uh, I think that's kind of everywhere, not just Calamazoo. And, and so again, it is a, a, a big, uh, ask for our staff to really work on hazardous violations.
Thank you. Yes, it is. Um, and so, along with that, so a lot has been said about the, the traffic stop study that was done previously. Was it in twenty fourteen?
Thirteen.
Twenty thirteen. Um, will this data from My Ninety, uh, replace kind of the traffic stop su- survey? Um, it, rather than replicate that survey from twenty thirteen, is this data going to kind of update us on a regular basis?
This will be updated on a regular basis, so I think it'll be a baseline on how we're doing, but this is not going to be the only thing we're doing. Uh, one of the things that, like I just mentioned, and it's kind of a good segue into this, is, um, we are going to do a better job of, um, finding out why our officers are stopping cars. We need to get better data on that. So we're looking at different models, um, um, programs that we can implement for our line staff when they pull a car over. What was the reason? Was it a hazardous violation? Was it a non-hazardous violation? Um, we need to start getting that data as well, and I think between that data and the, uh, My Ninety survey data, I think that's going to give us a really good idea on how we're doing, and to see where we need to go from there. So I think we're going in the right direction. Um, these tools, um, such as My Ninety, or what I was just talking about with the, the, that tracking data, um, with the analytics, you know, wasn't really available, you know, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, and I think it's, it's getting much better now, um, for us to really see how we're doing.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so, uh, you know, you may have read in some, on social media and in some reports that Calamazoo is the most dangerous city, one of the most, we have a most dangerous city moniker. So can you speak to that? And, and because, it looks like we have a lot of data, right? And because we're sharing the data, or, and it's transparent, is that why, uh, we're rising to the top of these? And I know our mission is to come to the bottom of those. So, um, can you speak to that a bit?
Yeah, I think, um, again, it's, it's, when people do that and say, you know, they look at some crime data and they say, well, we made a list. Uh, you know, really, if you look at U C R crime data, inform crime reporting data, it really cautions people against doing that, because there's a lot of factors that go into that. because there's a lot of factors that go into that. But with that being said, you know, we have to work on making this a safe community. And really, I think is the strategy that we're putting in place with our community partnerships and with our group violence intervention and our other interventions, our bridging opportunities, all these great things that we're doing. And we're starting to see, and I think we're still about fourteen percent, when I looked this morning, down year-to-date for assaults with firearms, twelve percent violent crime altogether. So we are actually seeing the numbers trend in the right direction. The other piece of that is we need to do a more accurate job reporting our crime data. I think in some instances, we have over-reported some of our offenses. So that's internal processes that we're fixing with our coding that we're doing internally. So I think all those things combined will hopefully get us off whatever discussions people are having about this. So very confident that we're moving in the right direction. We're all very well-aligned, like I said, with the commission, with public safety and the community. I think we're very well-aligned to make that happen.
Fantastic. Thank you. Lastly, I just, you know, I, and a lot of us here saw the video come out about the officers who saved the man from under the car. And I want to thank you. I'm sure he and his family want to thank you. And this is what you do. This is how you show up in our community. We need you, and we're very grateful for your service here. So I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. And you touched on teamwork, though. That's a perfect example of teamwork. You know, that, to make that a success, we needed some great teamwork and cooperation to pull the car off of them, to pull them out, to start the seat power. It was really good work. And we're, I was just happy to be able to share that with the community, because I think we don't do a very good job of sharing some of those good stories like that. We're going to get better at that.
Thank you. Yes, Chris, go ahead.
Thank you for presenting. I really appreciate it. I appreciate your time. I'm particularly struck by your intentions to meet with every individual officer in the force, to share the vision, cast your vision, to make sure that there is a uniform understanding. But I know that the team collectively has been doing a great job of trying to go out in the community and present to different groups and organizations and individuals and whatnot. And I think that will make a huge difference, that we all have a baseline understanding about what you are trying to achieve and how you're trying to achieve it. And so thank you for that work. I was curious, you mentioned about the officer wellness and that there was some sort of a texting component for officers to share how they're doing. I was just curious if you could share a little bit more about how that works? Is it on each individual call that comes in, like afterwards, it's just like, how are you feeling after this call? Or is it kind of a daily thing? Or how does that work?
It's going to work almost the same way as we do with the community, is the officers will receive a text. Not after an event, but just in general, they will receive a text every, and we'll have to figure out how often we want to do the survey. I don't want it too often, but I want to make sure we're getting some consistent feedback. So it'll just be kind of a randomized, like when they get that text. But I'm really hoping that officers do take the time to really let us know how they're doing and let us know what we can do better. So I'm really kind of encouraged to hopefully get that started and see what that's going to show us.
Yeah, I think that's great. I was curious with the My 90 as well, if there's any plans. Hopefully, something precipitates from tonight as well. But is there any plan for media outreach and whatnot to just kind of proactively inform the community about this, so that they know, you know, what the expectation is with interactions moving forward and how that program works?
Well, as a matter of fact, we have a press release ready to go, but I was going to wait till after today, after I talked to the commission first. But tomorrow morning, we're going to send out a press release and share those results with the media, and really also, and also show them in that press release the link to view that in the transparency page going forward. And then also really encourage people to participate in the survey. What's that? Go ahead.
And we also, not only the press release, but we're going to go throughout the neighborhoods and also throughout the community to give them updates, especially after the ninety-day trial is completed. Let everyone know what we've learned, what we can do better. And one more note, just to emphasize that Kalamazoo Department of Public Safety is the first city, I mean, first department in the state that's using this My 90 program.
Wow, that's great. It's also kind of along the same lines as well about the OIR report. You know, it was impressive before the final five community recommendations were handled with those two sessions. I was just curious in terms of like, how you're envisioning making sure to communicate that to community. I mean, again, hopefully, somebody covers that from tonight, from your presentation about the update about the OIR report. But that's, it's pretty impressive. I mean, I think I shared this at the, one of the two sessions. But I think there's a lot of communities that talked a lot and said, yeah, we're going to make change, and yeah, we're going to make things better. But, you know, here, you know, two, three years later from when we heard that lip service, nothing's changed. And here we have a department that had, what was it, forty recommendations? And forty out of forty recommendations have been systematically implemented, including the five that required more intensive community input. I think that should be applauded. I think that's highly impressive. And just from a person, just as a witness to those two final sessions, was incredibly impressed by just the dialogue and the authenticity of that conversation with community. It was, it was, it was great. And I was just curious to get your thoughts about how we get the word out to community as well, to share that as well.
Yes, thanks. And this is really step one, is the committee whole meaning sharing that information. And then we'll also put it on our transparency page. And then, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll get some more sharing of this with the media. We'll kind of let people know where we're at. And also on our social media, we'll get some final notes put out through that. So hopefully, we'll get the word out that way. And then word of mouth that, you know, really, and I want people to know that we just didn't do this to check a box, as far as all these things that we implemented. We really wanted to get better and improve. And not only did we change policy, but we put other things in place that we didn't have in 2020. You know, we have a public information officer that we didn't have then, which is great to help us. Really, I think communication was a big gap. And that's going to help us communicate. And the city has added a public information officer as well. That helps. We've increased our crowd management team and then our bike response unit. So we didn't have that capability, have a bike response unit to really help. And that bike response team is growing to seventeen bikes and officers trained in using bicycles for patrol and working in conjunction with the crowd management team. So a lot of things have been put in place that we didn't have back then.
Yeah. I was just going to mention this as well. You know, I don't know if there are any opportunities where we as commission can honor people on the team that have gone above and beyond. But I definitely would ask if it's possible, you know, if there's ever opportunities that we can just write a note to somebody or call somebody or, you know, just take somebody out to coffee to thank them for going above and beyond and doing a tremendous job, you know. Please let us know, because I think it's important. You know, I think it's great that you're doing a lot to make sure the team is recognized when people really give a shout-out for doing something above and beyond. But I think there's an opportunity for us as leaders to do that as well. And so please lean on us to those opportunities as well, if we can.
Yes, thank you. And I know that the officers really appreciate that as well. So yeah, thank you very much for that.
And lastly, I was just going to ask as well, kind of the year-over-year stats we heard from you a couple months ago just about how things were going. I don't expect you to have it just necessarily right in front of you. But, you know, just curious how we're trending with things, if we're still making some steady improvements? Are there some areas that we're still struggling with, generally speaking?
Yeah. So I believe, like I look at it almost daily, so I think we're at twelve percent decrease in violent crime, fourteen percent decrease year-over-year with assaults with firearms. It's where we're starting to see a little trend up is in property crimes. So we're looking at that to see what interventions we can do on the property crime end of it. But again, it's, you know, stats vary quite a bit from week to week and month to month. But trend-wise, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Peralta. Vice Mayor Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank, thank you and your team, everybody out there, for the great work you guys are doing. Three things. One, the relationship building. We've said for a long time, the police can't stop the violence. The police can't keep us safe. We, the community, has to keep us safe. And your commitment to that, your reaching out, the, I don't know, the kindness and the openness that you show to the community, I think is really paying off. I think that's great. Second, thanks so much for the prevention aspects. That's the thing. I've heard you say, chief, we will help you if you let us. We will stop you if you make us. And I think that's a wonderful motto, and I love the going door-to-door. That's just great. And then that's wonderful. And the third thing I wanted to ask, and maybe it's too early for this, I'm interested in what you found out in Wichita about work with the homeless. Maybe it's early for that.
No, go ahead, Captain.
Probably a little bit early. We just, they just got back on Thursday, so we met with them very briefly last week, just to get an update. They have a, it's probably one of the biggest models in the nation, probably one of the most robust ones. They have four members that are on their team. So again, it's reaffirming, we're doing a lot of things correctly here. Some of it is just procedural, very simple stuff. Hey, put signage up. This is what your signage should say. So some stuff that's easy lifts that we were able to knock out that very next day. And then there's some bigger things that we have to have that conversation as a community. How can we address housing issues? The difference between our community and theirs is they can get somebody in housing within a week, because there's robust housing and affordable housing. And just having those conversations, okay, what does that look like for us? It looks a little bit different. And how can we still provide those resources, but in a way that fits our community, that's correct for our community? Again, they have a four-person team, which does phenomenal work. You know, selfishly, I want to grow that team, but, you know, the chief here is always, but we have competing priorities within the city. I would love to grow that team even more, or our team specifically. But really hitting those in-progress crisis calls too, our officers have specialized training that are able to de-escalate situations very well, and we're getting really positive results from it. So we planned a debrief with the chief this week and hopefully create a list of recommendations that we'll bring back to the commission and say, these are some ideas that we have, and hopefully get them implemented. So they had a fantastic time, though. We're very thankful that Wichita let us come down there.
Thank you.
And I just want to say for the record, Captain Giles is in charge of recruiting and hiring. So if she wants bodies for this team, she's got to get some more folks on the boat. So don't blame me. Yeah.
Any other questions, team, at this point? So just to wrap this up here, I guess, for this time we're spending together. So Captain Green and, I mean, Chief Green and Chief Poison and Captain Giles, I mean, thank you for being here. And I see we've got two of your team members here in the back room. Thank you for being here as well. Here are some things that strike me. And we've both been around for a while, Vice Mayor Cooney. And I can say that, in my opinion, we, not saying anything in particular about, you know, policing in the past necessarily, but we are seeing a really transformative effort here in Kalamazoo when it comes to public safety. And I think you would agree with me on that. And I think I can speak for this whole commission. I mean, just listening to what everyone has said is that we could not be prouder of the work you're doing. And I'm sorry I'm emotional about it, but this is a top, this is one of the biggest things we do in Kalamazoo. This is, this is the primary way that many folks interact with the city of Kalamazoo, for better or for worse. And when you look at the value statement, and I just want to look at that again, that you kicked this all off with. Safe, I mean, these are our values. We are governing board. We are not out doing this work every day. It's, it is our effort to say, we want you to be doing this work in a good way. We need you to be doing this work in a good way. And we can be partners by supporting your efforts and saying, this is how we want it done. And looking back at this again, safe community for all, building meaningful relationships, enhanced employee wellness, improve communications internally and externally, and increase transparency. I mean, those are our values. I mean, those are values we should read and then make sure we're doing this, you know, when you bring this to us here. This is what we asked for, but I reflect as I look down through these values. Are we embodying that here on the commission as well as we would like? So thank you for being an example of that. And I want to make sure, you know, another thing that's interesting about this is you don't get to sit in a room and have practice and say, okay, here's how, you know, we got a game on Saturday, you know, here's what we're going to bring to that game. No, every single day you have to do this. You don't get a break from it. Four hundred calls a day. So this has, this is real-time work. You're talking about this, but you don't get to have a long retreat about it. You have to do it every day and bring it every day and every hour, every day. And that's challenging. And it's challenging when it's two o'clock in the morning, and maybe someone's been on a shift for twelve hours. I mean, it's easier to talk about here in the chambers, harder to do in real time. Maybe when people aren't, you know, showing you their best. And maybe also when team members have been in situations where they are literally seeing life and death and carrying that with them through the rest of their shift and as they go on, you know, through the days, weeks, and months ahead. So this is challenging work. To me, you know, you're heroes. And I want to make sure that you make sure your team knows this and they're supported. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Manjirisma?
Well, that concludes our work session this evening, Mayor.
All right. Well, hey, I'm sorry to get choked up about this. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. So anyway, it's, this work is so, so important. And, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, it starts with being human beings with each other and trying to bring our best to the table. And, you know, for goodness sakes, it just makes so much difference sitting up here, feeling like we're getting to be part of this. So once again, thank you for your work. And obviously, this is also not a one-time thing. You're, you're going to be coming back. You're going to get details on how you're doing from everybody in the community, you know, day in and day out going forward. We're going to have to, you know, keep looking at that and seeing what we can do to make sure we're just doing the best job we can. I also just want to say, thank you Johnny Berry, right, who's working with Pals League. That is so important. That's a new thing for us. I was at an event, I know we've talked about this a little bit, but I was at an event on Saturday night. We had the Kalamazoo Eastside Boxing Academy, which happened to be out at, well, they weren't at St. Mary's, they were at Galesburg Augusta High School for that event. Teams in from all over, from as far away as Indiana and Flint and other adjacent communities coming in. Just another way for people to, you know, take their energy and direct it in a way that is more structured. And I'll tell you what, it's just interesting, I can't say I've been a longtime boxing fan. I think it's the local work that's bringing me to this. But you've got folks out there who are experiencing an opportunity to have good, powerful interactions with adults to learn some character building and self-discipline. And everybody goes three rounds and hugs it out at the end. And so, I mean, if there, if there's some, that kind of energy about having a beef in this world and not being happy, hey, there's a structured way to work some of that out and really, you know, step up. Show us what you got there in a way that there's, we'll make sure it's going to be fair. So a lot of opportunities along those lines and inside the Pals League or outside. I'm really hoping that we can find out, what are the barriers that are keeping people feeling like they have an opportunity to participate in something that is positive and gives them some kind of a vision about, you know, a better future for themselves? Appreciate it. All right, so we have a meeting at seven o'clock, and looking forward to our regular business meeting. We are adjourned.